Here you are. You're welcome. Thank you so much. I'm Tammy Mann. I have the pleasure of serving as Vice President of the Board. Our Board President, Dan Gekker, is not with us, but we're certainly looking forward to having him back in June at our meeting. Before we get started, I'd also like to note that Dr. Davis Vaught is participating remotely from Bristol under allowance that allows for electronic participation given medical matter. So at this time, please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to focus on calling for approval of the minutes from the March 16 through 17 meeting of the Board. I trust that everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Duran? Is that a second, Dr. Davis Vaught?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair both side, motion carries. At this time, we're going to move into our public comment period for the Board. The Board certainly welcomes members of the public to come and address the Board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which their requests were received. Speakers are also asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. When your time is up, please close your remarks promptly. We ask that you also provide your name and affiliation at the beginning of your remarks. You certainly may provide copies of your remarks to Ms. Emily Webb, Director of Board Relations, after you finish speaking. I should also note that it is customary that the Board does not respond to comments from the dais. All comments shared. All comments will be shared with the appropriate staff to ensure follow-up on the other side of the meeting. So at this time, I have the names of six individuals that have signed up to speak, and we're going to go in the order in which those names were presented. So we're first going to hear from Dr. Alan Seibert.
Good morning, Vice President Mann, members of the Board, Superintendent. It is good to see everyone. My name is Alan Seibert. I serve as Constituent Services and Government Relations Officer in Roanoke City Public Schools. On behalf of Superintendent Verlita White, the RCPS Board, and the Region Six Superintendent Study Group, I'm here today to speak in support of Item J. This is your proposal to adopt special provisions regarding the use of chronic absenteeism indicator for accreditation that is on your action discussion agenda today. The proposal is based on the significant impact of COVID-19-related illness exposures, quarantines, and because COVID-related absences were well beyond the scope of the normal attendance interventions that divisions have in place. Primarily, though, today, I'm here to say thank you. I'm not sure how often you get to hear "thank you." So I want to thank you to the Board for considering this proposal, thank Superintendent for her recommendation, and a huge thanks to the terrific staff here at the Department who were commendably rapid and very collaborative in the work since I was here in March to make this request. Their outreach and collaboration over the last month has been very impressive and much appreciated. Your favorable action on Item J today will demonstrate responsiveness and understanding to those of us who work in the field. It will also remove a potential distraction. Instead of conversations in six, eight months about how unreasonable the indicator was, if it were applied to a pretty unusual year, we need the conversations and the energy to remain focused on unfinished learning, closing achievement gaps, gaps that have sadly been exacerbated by the pandemic. These challenges will require multi-year sustained efforts that support the whole child. In closing, in my march remarks, Roanoke City Public Schools is fully focused on serving students and families in a diverse urban environment, and we are committed to being collaborative partners in continuous improvement for public education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Superintendent White asked me to extend a standing invitation to all members of the Board, to our State Superintendent and our Secretary of Ed, to visit with students and teachers in Roanoke City Public Schools. RCPS is a ready partner, rich in resources and just terrific people, and like you, we're committed to working together for children and families in the Commonwealth. Thanks again for listening last month, and we appreciate your support of that item today.
Thank you so much. Candace Lucas.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of the order, be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of, of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates document that they participated in the training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Let's get you place to work, too.
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting, and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to Big Law and Big Ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this Board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between Big Law and Big Ed. So we request that you intervene regarding that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams. Melissa Siddiqui. Nancy DeFranco.
Good morning, Chair, Board members. I'm no stranger to this Board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda, we're going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the Board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs, before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children.
Regarding the use of chronic absenteeism indicator for accreditation that is on your action discussion agenda today. The proposal is based on the significant impact of COVID-19 related illness exposures, quarantines, and because COVID-related absences were well beyond the scope of the normal attendance interventions that divisions have in place. Primarily though, today, I'm here to say thank you. I'm not sure how often you get to hear thank you. So I thank you to the board for considering this proposal. Thank superintendent for her recommendation. And a huge thanks to the terrific staff here at the department who were commendably rapid and very collaborative in the work since I was here in March to make this this request. Their outreach and collaboration over the last month has been very impressive and much appreciated. Your favorable action on item J today will demonstrate responsiveness and understanding to those of us who work in the field. It will also remove a potential distraction. Instead of conversations in six, eight months about how unreasonable the indicator was, if it were applied to a pretty unusual year, we need the conversations and the energy to remain focused on unfinished learning, closing achievement gaps, gaps that have sadly been exacerbated by the pandemic. These challenges will require multi-year sustained efforts that support the whole child. In closing, in my march remarks, Roanoke City Public Schools is fully focused on serving students and families in a diverse urban environment, and we are committed to being collaborative partners in continuous improvement for public education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Superintendent White asked me to extend a standing invitation to all members of the board, to our state superintendent and our secretary of ed, to visit with students and teachers in Roanoke City Public Schools. RCPS is a ready partner, rich in resources and just terrific people. And like you, we're committed to working together for children and families in the Commonwealth. Thanks again for listening last month, and we appreciate your support of that item today.
Thank you so much. Candace Lucas.
Good morning, Chair, board members. I'm no stranger to this board, so it's good to see you once again. My name is Candace Lucas. I am an advocate for students with disabilities throughout the Commonwealth as well as the nation as well. Now, we've expanded to internationally after visiting Rwanda for going internationally. I'm here once again to sound the alarm regarding special education and the crisis that exists within the Commonwealth. I've write it a packet with you, and thank you, Emily, for passing it out to the board members, specifically addressing the issue of the superintendent's mandate as of March 4th, 2022, in which staff was required to go ahead and participate in the standards learning for the IEP, the development of standards-based IEPs before they are able to participate in any additional special education meetings in compliance with SB 1288 that was proposed by Senator Donovan, which we helped to author. As of this date, as I've documented, Halifax County Public Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, Fairfax County Public Schools, Loudoun County Public Schools, Powhatan County Public Schools, Chesterfield County Public Schools, and Richmond County Public Schools are all in defiance of that mandate. They continue to have individuals that participate in IEP meetings that are not trained in what is required in order to develop an appropriate IEP for our students, and it's highly detrimental to our students. Hearing officers are not trained. I don't understand why hearing officers are not required to participate in this training and receive the certificate. As a result of that, they're making rulings that are against the IDEA and detrimental to our children. We're proposing that the licenses of all individuals that are not participate, that are in defiance of of the order be suspended immediately until they comply. That's how serious it is. Once again, this is a crisis. And once again, we're also petitioning Superintendent Baylow to go ahead and make sure that it is accessible to all parents and advocates, the certificates to document that they participated in a training, whether it's added to the licensure website, which I'm on. I'm a licensed educator and administrator as well. I have my certificate. I don't have a problem presenting it. So I think that that's something that parents should be able to, to be able to know. When we asked, when we asked in Fairfax for the families to, for the school board, I'm sorry, for the IP members to advise us as to whether they participated, they said it was optional, and they were not going to advise us as to whether they participated or not, which demonstrates the defiance and the arrogance of the massive resistance as it pertains to the IDEA in the Commonwealth that must be dismantled. Also, I've included a letter from, who is an individual who is our hero. Her name is Jennifer Sassassano. I'm sure you guys have heard of her from the Loudoun County Public Schools. May I have one minute, please, additional to complete my remarks?
Could you please work to?
Yes, yes, yes. One minute, please. We want to go ahead and have you read her letter. Jennifer is an administrator within the Loudoun County who resigned, but in her resignation letter, she documented the egregious corruption and violations that I have been touting and millions of families have been touting for the last decade as it pertains to big law and big ed circumventing and preserving the federal rights of parents and students and exploiting our children through student trafficking by taking IDEA money and using it and weaponizing the state law to deny our students a public, fair and appropriate public education. We need this board to stand up and defend our children and protect our children. Jennifer identified the fact that there are educators who are being bullied, silenced, and required to go along with the conspiracy between big law and big ed. So we requested you intervene regarding that matter.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I got up this morning and I came down here to ask you one question. Why did the governor have to intervene with the Department of Health and the hideous training health education packet that they put together? I'm sure you guys are aware of what they were going to send to the schools to teach our children. I, I, I don't understand, and I'm sitting here and I was listening, and, you know, we're crying out to you everywhere, in every county, to do something different. And apparently, our governor hears us because he stepped in and stopped what was going to happen. There were links to abortion websites, homosexuality. You know, if you spoke like that to one of your people that you work with, you would be, you would be accused of sexual harassment, but yet it's okay for us to allow our children to have access to this? We're crying out to you, all of us, the special ed parents, the regular parents, the grandparents. And guys, it's a new day. So either you're going to work with us and help us fix this situation, or we're going to take it farther because we don't know what to do anymore. We really don't. I would like to introduce this into public record. This is from my friend Anne Tatis. She couldn't be here this morning. We are all asking you from every county and for, on every different level to help us. And we don't feel like you are. Your job is to protect the children of our state. The old regimen is gone. This is a new day. So either we can do this together and we can fix the problems, or we're going to have to figure out a different way. And that's really all I came to say this morning. I just, I don't understand. When you have parents crying out to you, you know, taxpayers, grandparents, we're waking the parents up, all of them, and we have three and a half months to fix this, and it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other speakers who didn't sign up in advance but would like to have the opportunity to speak? Please, if you could approach. Just tell us your name and where you're from.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Nerissa Rahaman, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm here on behalf of Equality Virginia, the leading advocacy organization in Virginia seeking equality for LGBTQ people. EV has always strongly supported the Virginia Department of Education's model policies for the treatment of trans students in Virginia's public schools, and we urge the board to support school boards in the process of adopting these policies. In addition to creating safer environments for all students, the policies allow school districts to provide professional development for school staff on LGBTQ student issues. These actions can move us toward a future in which all students in Virginia will have the opportunity to learn and succeed in school regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. It isn't lost on me that I'm here the day before the National Day of Silence, a student-led demonstration where LGBTQ students and allies are all around the country and the world take a vow of silence to protest the harmful effects of harassment and discrimination of LGBTQ people in schools. We know that trans and non-binary youth face unique barriers to an equal learning environment in K through 12 schools in Virginia. Per Glisten's 2019 National School Climate Survey, a staggering 84% of transgender youth felt unsafe in school because of their identity. 51% missed school because of safety concerns, and 50% said they were unable to use a name or pronoun consistent with their gender. Trans students who face these sort of victimization are then three times more likely to have missed school in the past month than their peers. Glisten's 2019 Virginia Snapshot reports that 62% of LGBTQ youth face verbal harassment and 26% face physical harassment in school. Trans and non-binary youth of color face even greater levels of bullying, harassment, and assault for not only their sexual orientation or gender identity, but also their racial or ethnic identity. School-based support, such as affirming and inclusive school policies like the model policy, can positively affect school climate for LGBTQ students. But currently, only 13 of 133 school districts in Virginia have adopted robust policies that are in full alignment with the VDOE guidance. This leaves trans and non-binary students without protections and leaves teachers and school teachers without, leaving teachers and school personnel without guidance or resources on how to create these inclusive environments. Findings from the 2019 School Climate Survey demonstrate that students attending schools with these resources and support report more positive experiences, including lower victimization and absenteeism and higher academic achievement. Given the high percentages of LGBTQ students in Virginia who experience harassment at school and the limited access to key resources and support that can have a positive effect on their school experience, it is absolutely critical that Virginia's school leaders, education policymakers, and other individuals who are obligated to provide safe learning environments for all students take the necessary steps to ensure school boards. Can I have just one additional minute? Thank you. As long as students are unsafe, fearful, and uncomfortable in their school environment, they can't focus on learning and sometimes cannot even be physically present. And as long as teachers and school personnel are deprived of the training and resources they need to serve all students, they cannot focus on teaching. This demonstrates the urgent need for school boards to adopt the model policy on the treatment of trans and non-binary students. Per existing state and federal law, all students have the right to an equal education, and school boards adopting the model policy can go a long way toward making that a reality in K through 12 schools in Virginia. I urge the Board of Education to work with local school boards in ensuring the model policies for the treatment of public schools are adopted at the fullest level. Until then, both students and teachers will be left in the dark. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here that did not sign up? Could you please approach and tell us your name and where you're from?
Hi, I'm Wendy Kersey. I'm from Mechanicsville. I'm extremely nervous, so I'm going to try and read this. Hanover County is a suburban community with over 100,000 residents located in the center of Virginia's population, population growth areas. Just 12 miles north of the state capitol, Hanover is a major part of the Richmond metropolitan area and contributes to a vigorous device, diverse regional economic economy. That is the first 27 seconds of the welcome to Hanover County posted on the HanoverCounty.gov website. I searched the same website and came across a safety and risk manual, and on the very first page of 354 pages, it says, number one, safety value statement in Hanover County. Safety is not the, is not only the top priority, it is a value that we must, must be included in every procedure and everything that we do. Management and employee support and involvement is the driving force on the Hanover Safety Program. Again, this is on page one of 354. I didn't get to read all the 354 pages last night. It was signed, it was amended on April 15th, 2020, and signed by the Hanover County Board of Supervisors. Is this, how is this board going to make any difference? Do you think the teacher, staff, students, and other parents should be the driving force in support of what the four school board members have stated by inviting Alliance Defending Freedom into our schools, homes, and communities? It sounds like they value the safety of their county employees. Do you think that transgender students feel safe having ADEA coming into our schools and our communities? I certainly don't think so. And I'm a white, married, suburban mother, raising a daughter with two of her biological parents, and I don't, I don't feel safe for those kids in our schools. By, by Hanover, I inviting Alliance Defending Freedom to look over our policy on the very people they target right now. They are attacking the T, the I, and/or the A, the she, the he, the they, the we, the Z. They are only attacking the, okay, sorry, today, they're only attacking them today. Tomorrow, it will be, it will be the LGB, the divorced or single. They are coming for you. The Hanover Board of Supervisors said they had nothing to do with bringing ADF and treated it like a hot potato that was burning their fingers. They said, we have nothing to do with it, and we can't do anything about it. And then they said next, then smiling, saying, thank you for all the comments. I don't want their smiles or their thank yous. We need them to stand up to the bullies. I don't think we're putting our best for the board with having these four members on our board. I don't think it's graceful, a word that the Hanover County Public Schools put forward when we were in COVID. They're not showing us grace. It's going to be hard to keep staff and teachers on board in a very hostile environment like this. My daughter is on her third school counselor since entering high school. She doesn't graduate until next year. I know someone who's left the Hanover Public Schools only to take the same position with a different school district that has already adopted the policy. The harm that has been caused by the board cannot be undone, but it can be rectified. Alliance, sorry, four members of our school board thought it was a good idea to invite ADF into our schools and therefore our community in our, and our homes, a group that hides behind the shield of religion and freedom, telling and educating the flock that anyone who does not live the way they dictate is not to be trusted. We must attack anyone who has different beliefs than us. I've taken many, many journeys to talk to God and never even heard a whisper of hate.
Excuse me. We generally allow a three-minute timeframe for open comment, so we really, really appreciate you coming and sharing. And since you weren't here at the beginning, one of the things I shared is that it is customary that the board does not respond to comments that are shared during public comment, but I assure you that the staff will follow up with you and address whatever follow-up steps are necessary to make sure that you are aware of where and how, you know, these issues can be addressed.
I appreciate.
Thank you so much for coming. So that is going to close our public comment period if there are not others. We have another that is, did not sign up? Okay.
They were delayed now.
Okay, if you could please, one at a time, come up and address the board. We have three minutes allotted to each speaker. So just share your name and who you're representing and share your comments.
My name is Ms. Michelle Williams, and I am representing not only my two children, who are victims of faith rape between Chesterfield County Public Schools and Richmond Public Schools. I'm going to start with Chesterfield. My daughter will be graduating in a month, less than a month, actually. She has a reading level of third grade. Chesterfield County Public Schools failed her since kindergarten. Most recently, last summer, Diane Glover was in possession of an IEE for my daughter. She held that IEE for six months, refusing to release it so that my daughter could receive Most recently, in a meeting for my daughter, an eligibility meeting for my daughter, Amy Britcher stated that she did not receive all the medical documentation, nor did she request the medical documentation after I had provided a release of information. They've delayed my daughter meeting by a month. Now I'm going to stay in Chesterfield as it relates to my younger son. Chesterfield County Public Schools failed to monitor him. Samantha Hollins failed to monitor him on his progress at a private placement. My son went there in January of 2021. He had advanced to a third-grade reading level. My son deteriorated from April of 2021 when I was provided the documentation. When I brought it out, it was in October. Chesterfield did nothing. I repeatedly asked for support and guidance for my son. Wasn't done. Following up February of this year, there were multiple students that left that school for the same reasons I pulled my son. My son was grouped with individuals who were lower functioning than he was. Now I'm going to transfer over to Richmond where we are now. Richmond Public Schools today, in 30 minutes, I will be having my fifth eligibility meeting for my son because Jose Morales refuses to honor my request to have an appropriate eligibility meeting, which should run anywhere between three and four hours, given this particular student who was finally afforded an IEE for neuropsychological evaluation. Chesterfield refused to honor my son's disabilities. It doesn't enable him of being able to do. And the greatest disability is the inability to see one, to see someone's more. I have my fifth meeting in 30 minutes. My son has been out of school for a month because Richmond Public Schools refused it to allow him in-person services. His second, today is his third day of school because Alonzo Ford was saying that the least restrictive environment was home-based, and it was not. That's the most restrictive environment for students such as my son. And when I was forced to sign the homebound papers, because please believe, as I'm standing before you all today, I'm not in fear of any criminal charges being placed upon, but as soon as I signed for home-based services, I'm met then, two weeks later, being told they don't have enough teachers. But yet my son said, I got a call that my son has 40 absences, 40. His speech and language services and OT services should have never ended when he left the private school. So yes, you will see a letter soon, but that letter is highly inaccurate because what Chesterfield County Public Schools and Richmond Public Schools is doing to my son is buck breaking him.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to share. We have one more speaker. If you could share your name and who you're representing.
My name is Melissa Siddiqui. I am part of the Mamba Kits Against Faith Rape Group. I honestly didn't know that I was going to come here today. This was a last-minute decision because every time I speak out about what's going on with my children, Chesterfield County weaponizes truancy against me. I was convicted Tuesday of truancy. For the last three years, we have been in contact with Samantha Hollins, and she refuses to step in and do anything about the situation that we're facing in Chesterfield County. I have a 13-year-old reading on a third-grade level, and Chesterfield County wants to put him in a seventh-grade classroom for three to six weeks while they're doing evaluations. But they stretch these evaluations out. I can't stress that enough. So three to six weeks turns into three to six months. My son will deteriorate. He will be suicidal all over again. That's how he was in Chesterfield County Public Schools settings. If not for private evaluations ordered by a federal magistrate judge, Chesterfield County would have continued to cover up the fact that he is severely dyslexic because they don't want to handle the issue. So instead of Samantha Hollins stepping up and doing anything about this, she was part of instructing Chesterfield County to delete all of those private evaluations out of the file, all of the enrollment documents out of the file. Therefore, I'm being charged with truancy. This can't be happening. It's a felony to alter our children's records, and Chesterfield County is being instructed by Sands Anderson, who you guys pay up to $1,200 an hour to do what? To tell your employees to commit felonies? There is way better places that this money could be going, like educating the severely dyslexic. Because what Parker is being set up for right now is collecting a disability check for the rest of his life, and he is brilliant. He is above that. I cannot stand for it anymore. So threatening me with child protective services because I'm trying to keep my child safe? That is ungodly. It's unholy, and it should not be stood for anymore. You guys can do something about that culture. This is a trauma culture that nobody is doing anything about, and you guys have the power to do it. If people are threatening your jobs, speak on it. If you're sitting here knowing you're complacent, like there's nothing else, there's nothing else I can say. We've been coming to these meetings since 2017. We're still in the same boat. Like, this can't be. I'm the one paying to educate my child. $1,000 a month for dyslexia services? That's not an education, that's an accommodation. I can't afford to properly educate him because everything I have is going into just basic reading skills. I know you guys have the money to do something about that. And the literacy plan, that's just a cover-up. Because the, to get, to get the qualifications to receive those services, it's like at the top of a mountain, we can't get there. If it takes a million things to get these kids eligible, on top of having private providers say these child need, you know, these children need these things to thrive, like, what are we doing? This, this can't continue to happen. I mean, what point is Samantha Hollins going to be removed? I mean, we've been begging for someone to make her do her job. She won't even respond to emails. And what, what are we supposed to do?
Thank you for your comments. And I will say, and as much as we did have people join us at the, after the opening of the session, that, of course, the board does not respond to comments that come from public comment, but we do take very serious the comments that are shared, and we have a responsibility to make sure. a responsibility to make certain that staff follow up and provide the appropriate information to address the concerns as they are being articulated. It is really important to understand that the authority that rests with the board to do its job are constitutionally mandated, and we are required to follow the Constitution in executing our duties. We will see to it that the comments that have been provided are addressed as appropriate. So thank you all. We do value your time and your desire to come and address the board. These are very important issues, and we certainly don't take them lightly. I want to assure you of that.
Protect our children. Protect our children.
Change it, then. Show them reading. Let us have input.
All right, we're going to move along in our agenda. The next item, this actually closes the public comment period, and we're going to move forward with the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. We have six items that are on the consent agenda this morning. I am aware that Dr. Duran will need to abstain from part of item F. Are there any other items from the board that need to be removed from the consent All right, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve items A through E on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Duran, moved.
Second.
Dr. Anderson, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. On item F, can I have a motion to approve all of the alternative accreditation plans, with the exception of the alternative accreditation plan for Arlington Community High School in Arlington County?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Anderson, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Holton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, the chair votes aye. Now I'd like to have a motion to approve the alternative accreditation plan for Arlington County, Arlington Community High School in Arlington County.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Holton.
Second.
Second.
Second, Dr. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, the motion carries. All right, that takes us down to item G. We're going to be moving into the final review associated with the Data Science Standards of Learning and the Data Science Standards of Learning Curriculum Framework. For that presentation, we have Dr. Tina Mazikane, Mathematics Coordinator, and Dr. Alban, Director of STEM and Innovation. So thank you for being with us.
Good morning, Vice President Mann, Superintendent Balo, and esteemed members of the Board of Education. My name is Tina Mazikane, and just for public clarity, I am not a doctor, but thank you for giving me the title. I am the K-12 Mathematics Coordinator in the Office of STEM and Innovation at the Virginia Department of Education. And joining me today is Dr. Brendan Alban. He's the Director of the, in the Office of STEM and Innovation. We are very pleased today to present to you the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning and Data Science Standards of Learning Curriculum Framework for final approval. On November 18th, 2021, the board received the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning and Curriculum Framework for first review. The Virginia Department of Education accepted public feedback on the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning through email and electronic submission from December 17th, 2021, through January 31st, 2022. The VDOE also held two virtual public hearings, presided over by Board of Education members, on January 11th and 20th of 2022. During this public comment period, the VDOE received input from parents, educators, representatives from business and industry, and other community members. The VDOE also convened a virtual review meeting on February 7th, 2022, with educators from state institutes of higher education, state mathematics organizations, and business and industry representatives to review and seek feedback regarding the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning. The proposed Data Science Standards of Learning and Curriculum Framework, which are found in Attachment A and B of your board packet, include revisions based upon this feedback and have been looked at since the, the board first started looking at this, it's first review in November. So we've collected this feedback, and in collaboration with our Data Science Standards of Learning lead developers, we've reviewed the comments and the feedback collected, and we've made edits based upon that feedback to the, the standards and the curriculum framework. The edits that were made to the documents included providing clarity and consistency of language, specifying and expounding upon the application of statistics and mathematics, and focusing more on data bias versus ethics. The Data Science Standards of Learning and Curriculum Framework will support school divisions in offering a rigorous high school mathematics course in data science, which will provide students with an option to earn either a half-credit in mathematics by taking a one semester class, or a full-year credit in mathematics towards graduation starting in 2022, 2023. Mathematic standards of learning focused on data science do not currently exist in Virginia, and these standards will expand mathematics learning opportunities for students and support stronger data literacy skills. The Virginia Department of Education will accept applications from school divisions across the Commonwealth to participate in a pilot implementation of the Data Science Standards of Learning and Curriculum Framework in 2022, 2023 school year. Teachers participating in the pilot will receive initial professional learning in June 2022 and be asked to participate in a collaborative cohort of teachers implementing the standards. Data will be collected to measure the effectiveness of the pilot and target ways to improve instructional resources designed for use during the pilot. The Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends that the Board of Education approve the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning, the proposed Data Science Standards of Learning Curriculum Framework, and implementation of a pilot during the 2022, 2023 school year. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from board members? Dr. Duran?
Just a little more clarification. What, for the pilot, how many districts do you intend to have participate in that? How many teachers, perhaps? And what is kind of the, the goal of the pilot in terms of the number and?
We, we initially put out a call for interest in the pilot, and I'm just looking at my numbers. I believe we received interest from over 16 different school divisions. We will be sending out an application tomorrow to all the school divisions so that they can actually submit names of teachers who'd like to participate in professional learning in June. So we've had quite a bit of interest, probably up to maybe 300 students. So.
So it's basically whoever has requested can participate? There's no limit, or there's no goal that you have to reach to have in the pilot?
We hope to have a cross-section across the state of different-sized divisions, different regions, so that we can get a good sampling of, of data. Because we'd really like to collect a lot of data on the pilot to make sure that we can improve instruction, improve the resources, and ensure efficacy of, of the standards.
I think that's really important because I think these are, these standards will be very, very meaningful, but if we don't have a good representation of small, large, urban, suburban districts, that was just my concern, to make sure we have that kind of a pilot. So.
Absolutely. We had 26 high schools that have expressed interest, and about 38 teachers maximum at this point. We hope to recruit some of our school divisions in our more rural areas because we would really like to, to support them. And we do have support from the Rural Math Innovative Network to help support those rural divisions in, in moving forward with data science, recognizing the, the limitations that exist in smaller divisions.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, anything you want to add? Awesome. All right, well, hearing no further questions, can I have a motion to approve the Data Science Standards of Learning and the Curriculum Framework and implementation of a pilot program during the 2022, 2023 school year?
So moved.
Dr. Duran? Ms. Holton, I saw you in there as a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you so much for.
Thank you all.
For today. Onto item F, final review of exempt action to align the regulations establishing standards for accreditation in public schools in Virginia. We're going to have Jim Chapman, Regulatory and Legal Coordinator, chair with us.
Thank you, Vice President Dr. Mann. Members of the board, Superintendent Balo, good morning. This is a relatively quick action, I hope. Way back in 2020, the General Assembly amended Section 22.1-79.1 of the Code of Virginia in order to standardize the minimal, the minimum instructional time required across K-12, whereas kindergarten in particular had previously required a minimum of 540 hours. Chapter 552 now requires a minimum of 990 hours of instructional time. This legislation included the late enactment clause, which is why you're not seeing that until, until 2022. So this law is supposed to go into effect on July 1st of this year. We're presenting these relatively modest changes to the standards of accreditation in order to align ourselves with the legislation, and so that we have plenty of time to notify school divisions of this change. Of course, the, the changes won't go effect until July 1st. Again, this is an exempt action because the board is not exercising any discretion in carrying out the legislative requirements, and because the shortened regulatory process that attends the exempt action will allow the board to meet the required deadlines. A small adjustment to what you have written down, Vice President, if, just to button up on the board's bylaws, if we might, if the motion might be to, to waive first review and also approve the exempt action in accordance with Superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Questions on this item? Hearing none, we're going to have a motion to waive first review of the exempt action to align the standards of accreditation with Chapter 552 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Davis Vaught? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, chair votes aye also. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman? All right, we're on to, ah, looks like you're right with us again for item I. Final review of fast-track action to align regulations establishing standards of accreditation in public schools with Chapter 26 of the 2021 Acts of the Assembly.
Thank you very much. Yes, Chapter 26 of the 2021 Acts of the Assembly amended Section 22.1-137.2 of the Code of Virginia, it's the, the chapter on school property, to require that every public school conduct a lockdown drill at least once during the first 20 days of each session. Previously, that section required that public schools conduct lockdown drills at least twice during the first 20 days of each school session. This will require us to amend, in the standards of accreditation, regulation, or Section 260, again, a very, very small and modest change. We're presenting this action to the board as a fast-track because we do not expect this to be controversial and because it's the result of a legislative mandate, and the board, of course, is not exercising any discretion. We're just following strictly what the legislation requires. The Superintendent recommends that the board approve this fast-track regulatory action, and as at the last item, if, if the motion might be to waive first review and approve the action.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on this action?
Dr. Mann, I'd like to ask for clarification on one point.
Sure, please, go ahead.
Mr. Chapman, it says 20 days of each session. Would that include holiday sessions, summer school sessions, things of that nature?
I believe in this context, it's, it refers to the school year. Yeah.
So if there is a, a holiday program in the, in December, would that be a session? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chapman.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a motion to waive first review and approve the fast-track action to align the standards of accreditation with Chapter 26 of the 2021 Acts of the Assembly.
So moved.
Thanks, Ms. Holton. Second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Dr. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, chair votes aye as well. All right, on to a first review of the proposal, item J, to adopt special provisions regarding the use of chronic absenteeism as an indicator for accreditation year 2022, 2023. And we have with us again Amy Siepka, who did a wonderful job briefing the board on yesterday during this work session on this item, so please.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice President Mann, Superintendent Balo, and board members. At yesterday's work session, we talked about the unique circumstances that have impacted attendance in schools during the 2122 school year. Because of these circumstances, the department is asking the board to adopt special provisions related to the use of a school quality indicator in determining the accreditation status of schools, as the standards of accreditation do provide the Virginia Board of Education with the authority to do so. Specifically, the board is being asked to consider the adoption of special provisions to remove the chronic absenteeism indicator from the determination of school accreditation status for 2022, 2023 only. In doing so, the earned performance level and chronic absenteeism rate will be assigned to and reported for schools. Data will be available to school divisions as they prepare for the 2022, 23 school year and will be available publicly to ensure transparency to all stakeholders in the community. Today, I would like to request that the board waive first review and adopt the special provisions so that school divisions can be provided advanced notification of the change, and Department of Education data services staff has time to make the necessary changes to the programs and reports surrounding accreditation data prior to preliminary accreditation information being provided to school divisions, which typically occurs in July. Are there any questions related to this request at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Siepka. Not a question, but a comment. We are very grateful to you and others for bringing this to our attention, and I'm supportive of this action, but I think we all want to stress, and we had some of this conversation yesterday, but for the public's sake, that this is a one-time deal. It does not at all represent any change in our assessment on the board of the importance of school divisions addressing chronic absenteeism, and we hope and trust that they and we will be good partners working towards addressing chronic absenteeism in the 2223 school year, even without this indicator influencing anybody's accreditation status in that year. It just, as we come out of this pandemic period, it is crucial that our schools, school divisions be doing over and above what they've done before, and that we do what we can to help them, because we've got to have our kids in school. We cannot help especially our neediest learners learn if they're not present. And it's a very difficult dilemma, and I know it's not all, it's not easy, and it's not all within the hands of the local divisions, but I just don't want anybody to think that this action means any diminution of our hopes and expectations of, of working to address the, the challenge together. The other thing is a specific thing that came up yesterday in a conversation with Secretary Gudera. She was asking about attendance works and remembering that they, some of their leadership is based in Virginia, and you reminded us yesterday from the podium that we did get work, help from them on some professional development some years ago. And I was going to suggest that you might want to send that work to the secretary's office, just so they know what we have done in the past with, to take advantage of that resource, but also we may want to think about what more can we, what more help can we get from that really top-quality organization going forward, and maybe use that even to reinforce our message. Maybe specifically, do they have advice, training on how divisions can address attendance issues as we come out of the pandemic? What more new tools might they have for the toolbox? And is there anything we can do to help highlight that to our divisions in the fall, be it through the superintendent's resources, or maybe have a work session here or something? But anyway, just wanted to encourage. But anyway, just wanted to encourage both everybody to keep working on that and specifically the, the notion of reaching out to Attendance Works again.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent Balo.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President, and I think Anne covered it. Thank you, and we certainly look forward to engaging with Attendance Works to at least get a fresh perspective after evaluating the progress that was made in just one year regarding chronic absenteeism in Virginia and how we can sort of hit the reset button and also on the onus or responsibility that our local school divisions have to continue to report this and explain this to stakeholders, even though they won't be, there won't be consequences for that. So I appreciate Anne that you're pushing that ball forward and look forward to continuing that work.
Yes, Dr. Duran?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Holton. I shared a lot of my comments, but one question, clarification from yesterday. Any more discussion on when this is back in place, the following year? What will the year be for the database? Will it be 2019, 20 that we'll be referring back to because of this year's data being very inaccurate? I know we talked about that a little bit yesterday. If you haven't made a decision, that's fine, but just wondering if there's been any more thought on that point.
Yeah, we have not had the opportunity to talk about that yet. As you are all aware, we have had accreditation was waived for two years, so we do not have chronic absenteeism information and performance levels assigned during those two years. We will have to have some discussions once we start looking at the data and trying to problem solve through what we will do once we see what we have.
Thank you. So the clarification is our action here simply to waive it for this year, not to make any decision on what year we would use for whether it's 1920. This is solely to waive it for this year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions on this item? All right, hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to waive first review and approve the special provision that removes chronic absenteeism from the determination of school accreditation status for 2022, 23 school year only, so long as performance level data are available publicly for absenteeism. So, a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Duran and Dr. Davis Vaught. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Now for item K, we're going to hear a first review of the Guidelines for Practice Year Two of the Early Childhood Unified Measurement and Improvement System by Ms. Jenna Conway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excellent. Well, good morning, Vice President Mann, Superintendent and Board members. I'm very pleased this morning, building on our presentation from yesterday, to present to you the set of updated guidelines for practice year two of Virginia's new unified, Early Childhood Unified Measurement and Improvement System. As a reminder, yesterday, we talked about where we were in school readiness, the why and the key work that we've done together over the last few years to build out a system for thinking about how we would measure and support quality across all of Virginia's diverse publicly funded early childhood birth-to-five classrooms. As we talked a little bit about yesterday, the responsibility and the authority of the Board is to set forth how we do that. And just as a reminder, that is rooted in recent Virginia law, the state code that calls on you to establish this quality measurement and improvement system. A year ago, you approved our guidelines for practice year one. It is a healthy document. I think we went from about 80 pages last year to just over 100 this year and we won't go into all of the detail, but we will really highlight the set of changes that we've made based on what we've learned from the field. So the guidelines in front of you for first review today highlight some of, have been updated, enhanced based on what we've learned. They were fully endorsed by our broadly representative early childhood advisory committee. So the same law that unified early childhood moved it to the Board of Ed and Department of Ed and, and gave you the authority to, to establish the system also called on us to explicitly set up a broadly representative committee and that committee, after a few hours of meeting last month, fully endorsed this and will help us make important progress towards being ready next summer to have a fully established quality measurement and improvement system. So, big picture, there's a couple of things that I want to highlight. I know sometimes with a larger document, you can get very much into the weeds. So the, the big picture points are this. One is things are working generally well and so we are not bringing substantive changes to you today. Really, the things in which we are focused most on, what seems to be working, as you think about some of the data I shared from you yesterday around satisfaction, this is not an overhaul. This is more tweaks to sort of strengthen the, the program. We are trying to get everybody to participate in the practice year. It won't be required. There are still no stakes, no consequences for either participation or performance. It is purely practice, but we think helping people understand how they will be measured, what it takes to do that, what that data means for their own program, classrooms, educators is really important. And so we're working very closely with our, our partners at the Early Childhood Foundation and across the state to do that. We also have a new structure this year to help us do that. And so realizing, after multiple years of doing this and funding communities to opt in, we had a little bit of a Swiss cheese effect, which is some areas of the state were covered, but if you were to literally take a piece of Swiss cheese and put it over the state, you also, if you remember that red and gray mat from yesterday, had areas that weren't covered, right? And that meant that those educators, those classrooms, those programs, those families, those kids were missing out. And so in close partnership with the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation, we launched Ready Regions. And so as we speak, we have across the state, entities in each of our communities, full coverage of the state, working to prepare for practice year two so that we can really get the word out, build the relationships that are necessary and ultimately, whether it's this summer or even during the course of the year, bring everybody onto the grid, into the fold, get them prepared so that when we come to you next year with our final set of, of guidelines for the, the first real year, we'll have given everybody a, you know, a fair shot at participating. So that's a really important, you start to hear us talk less about PDG, Community Networks or Smart Beginnings and more about the Ready Regions. As of last week, we have also established Ready Regions in code. So the very same law that is, gives you the responsibility and the, and the, and the opportunity to establish the Measurement Improvement System now talks about the Ready Regions and that they will play this really important role to make sure that every last corner of our state is covered. How we got to these enhancements, and I talked a little bit about this yesterday, but really wanting to build the system with the field and so getting out there, asking, listening and learning from the field itself. We also have a tremendous amount of data coming in through Link B5 and so taking that data and using that data, as I described, and Dr. Duran, I talked a little bit with the curriculum work, to make sure that Virginia's data is helping us derive the system. And then we tried to do a sort of third exercise of taking a big step back, not only hearing what we're hearing in the field, looking at the data, but saying, okay, where do we need to be a year from now? Noting that we have some programs, for instance, that are not participating, noting that we want to fully anticipate what type of change this means. What are the things that we imagine that we'll want to make sure that we've practiced this year so that nobody is surprised, nobody feels unprepared as we go into the first real year? So if you'll remember yesterday, I talked a little bit, I shared some data with you and I talked a little bit about some of the field, the feedback that we received from the field. And so the set of enhancements that we have integrated throughout the document cover the things we heard from the field. So and there's seven key things that I want to highlight for you all today. So the first one was, we know we need to get everybody participating and we know that there was a lack of clarity about who had to participate. And so as you see here, we're working really closely to make sure that we get everybody participating if we can in practice year two. We established the Ready Regions. We are doing a lot more kind of direct interest and outreach, so really making sure that our publicly funded programs understand this. We've updated our FAQs and we've added clarification to the guidelines on who has to participate, what it means to be publicly funded and really starting to work directly from the state in addition with the Ready Regions and VCF to make sure that everybody gets multiple forms of notice that this opportunity is available to them. Our second piece is really focused on consistent observations and supportive feedback and we continue to see a lot of excitement about the class, which is that rigorous observation of infant, toddler and preschool classrooms, when people are aware and prepared and they feel like it's accurate. We still know, as the data came in from our 4,000 observations in the fall, that we see some variations across the state, right? We see scores that look unusual. We know that we have a, a whole range of individuals, although everybody has passed the rigorous assessment that's required to be an observer, we have what's called drift, right? Where sometimes folks are more accurate or less accurate and we have some kind of inconsistencies statewide. And so one of the big things that we're going to do this year is we've run a competitive process to identify an outside institution that will go out to a random subset of classrooms and observe the same classrooms at the local observers and that will give us comparative data, really to make sure that we're giving consistent feedback to all of our educators across the state, right? Knowing that we have a several thousand-member kind of observer cadre, really making sure that whether you're in the north, south, east or west, that you're getting consistent feedback and support to improve. We also continue to refine all of our protocols. We want to make sure that we don't come in and observe you on a day that you're doing water day or you have a field trip, right? That's not an accurate indicator of your experience. I think as we talked about, Dr. Duran, we're looking very closely at some of our classrooms that need additional attention, our classrooms that serve our children with special needs or sort of dual-language classrooms, and so continuing to refine those protocols to make sure that it is an accurate, consistent and fair, this data that's going into the classroom observations. So that's a big, big shift. It does mean that some of our classrooms will be observed upwards of three times next year, but it also means that we, when we bring you all of the data for the statewide, we can be assured that it's consistent, accurate and fair across the board. The third piece has a lot to do with curriculum and I explained the why for this yesterday when we looked at the data, right? And sort of who has access to this and who doesn't. And so the big one is making sure that there are enough options. A year ago, we said we have a small number of options, we're going to have a review process and we're looking at other, kind of how we might develop a, a free or low-cost option. And now we have significantly strengthened this section of the guidelines to say, we now have more than 30 approved options as well as Stream and Three and are now really focused on making sure that each program understands what is approved, you know, and kind of can be, make an informed choice about what makes most sense to them. I also think we know that curriculum is not as simple as just purchasing an item, right? And so there's both the cost and how much does it cost to purchases, but then there's the real work, the staff, time and energy and commitment, the leaders, the leadership, supervision and support around using a curriculum day in and day out. And so we've made a big investment in Stream and Three, not only in making sure there is an open educational resource, which means that you, anybody in the state can download the curriculum and use it, but we know that that's not sufficient. And so prioritizing in this contract, those programs that don't have an approved use and looking at what type of foundational training, coaching and support will be needed to fully use that. So that's probably the biggest shift from last year to this year. Our requirement remains the same. In order to get the points for curriculum, you just need to be using it in one classroom. And we thought about whether we wanted to go a step further than that and say, well, maybe we should require it for all classrooms. But again, when you look at the data that we showed you yesterday and look at what a big lift it is to even use it well in one classroom, right? And for family childcare, typically there only is one classroom, we felt it would be more prudent to hold, keep the requirement the same. Let's see how much progress we can make with more than 30 options as well as Stream and Three over the next year before raising the bar any further, knowing that again, for more than half of our programs, this is a dramatic change, right? They have, they weren't necessarily using an approved curriculum before this. We, and this kind of speaks a little bit to that, but you'll also notice throughout the document, making sure that we are prioritizing our participants in VQP5 for improvement. You know, I know we've talked a lot about as a Board that this is about measurement and improvement. It doesn't really do Virginia kids, the, the, help them, prepare them for school if we're just focused on getting an accurate measure, but we need to then use that information to support improvement. So now that that is all under the auspices of the, of the Department of Education, making sure across the different supports that we talk about in this, this guideline, whether that's infant toddler support, whether that's Stream and Three, whether that's advancing effective interactions, making sure across our contracts that support professional development, that those programs that are participating in VQP5 and need assistance are the priority. And we've done work this year in all of the contracts for next year to make sure that they're aligned with what the state now expects. This one is more of an anticipation. So when we took that big step back and said, well, what we need a year from now, one of the things that we have heard from programs is that while it's really important and they appreciate the class and the focus on curriculum and understanding kind of how the points are derived, that a number is not really useful for families in terms of making choices, right? It'll be a number between 100 and 800, like what does that mean, right, to most families? And that, that may not also be the best way to represent all of our programs. So one of the things that we'd like to work on this year, so that when we come to you next year with our, our final guidelines, is what might a site-level quality profile look like? Obviously, it will include, right, the measurement, that's got to be a part of it, that's required in law, but thinking about what families look for, thinking about what providers want to highlight. Right now, often when you Google the name of a childcare center, if they don't have their own unique website, what comes up are some strange yellow pages, right? Or kind of like, here's the information about it, right? Often somebody who's just making money kind of by having you click on it. We envision and think there could be a real utility in having a platform, probably something similar, yet uniquely early childhood, to what we have for school quality profiles, where you could click and get a full picture on a program. The measurement would be a part of that, but it, we might also share important information about health and safety. You might share information about, you know, address and hours and other things, but we, we realize that we need to work very closely with the field and with families to understand what would be most useful, how would we create a uniquely early childhood version of what we have right now with school quality profiles? So again, this is one of those things that we have added to the document. We don't have a prototype today, we don't have a kind of example. We've got to do work with the field, with families and with providers to think through how we could do this thoughtfully, but we wanted to insert that idea in there, way in advance, that you know that we're working on it with our Early Child Advisory Committee with the field and that we would bring something to you next year. The operational pieces of the guidelines, we've got some language in there about improving how folks use Link B5, so this is really important to think about. We've got to get a lot of users, right? We're talking about probably 20,000-plus users when you think about 9,000 classrooms across several thousand sites, making sure that Link B5 is working for the field. And so there's a set of enhancements that we continue to make each year to make the data system easier to use, to make sure that we get the full participation and that we have those hotlines between our workaround Link B5 and our workaround providing direct cash assistance to childcare throughout the pandemic. We are getting to know our end users very, very well and we've got everybody from folks who are incredibly sophisticated with use of technology to people who are keeping fax machines alive, right? And to log onto their computer like once a month, right? And so really being well-prepared because maybe you're not spending all that time on the computer because you're doing an incredible job with infants and toddlers, right? So we want to make sure that we're supporting all of our end users to get the accurate data so that the data we put into the system, we bring to you, we share with parents, is accurate and consistent statewide. And we have a whole website on Link B5 and all of that, which you can check out, but really focused on using something that works for all of our, our, our end users. And then the other key piece here is, as you might imagine, as you think about what it will take to ultimately complete more than 18,000 classroom observations a year, like they're going to be kind of extenuating circumstances, there're going to be things we couldn't imagine happen, right? They're going to be, you know, somebody, if something happens and this sort of very, very unusual thing happened to my teacher, my kids or this classroom, and we need a fair process for understanding, okay, you were supposed to have an observation this day, but something happened and how do we make a determination on that? Or you think the scores are off for X or Y or Z reason? And so we will be, and we've got this, we've got these one-off now, right now, it goes to emails to myself or Chris or our partners at the Ready Region. to emails to myself or Chris or our partners at the Ready Region or the Early Childhood Foundation. And so what we are proposing is to create an appeal or kind of more formal process by which if something out of the sort of normal occurs with an observation or as part of this process, you meant to enter the data, but you hit threes instead of fours and you've got the score sheets to show us that it was just a, it was just a human error, that we've got a formal process for looking at that, reviewing it, noting it and kind of keeping it on file. Again, this helps us organize ourselves so we can be fair and consistent statewide. So we added a little bit of language, moving that from something that now sits in various people's email inboxes to kind of a more formal process so we can again, make sure that the system is fair statewide and we ultimately build the credibility that we need to. So those are the seven big changes and shifts that you see within this larger document. Again, the point, I'll reiterate, a lot of this remains the same, but we went out and engaged the field, we did the survey and have had the conversations and really wanted to be responsive to what was working, were there challenges with the field? We've looked at the data, we see that we need to make sure that we're ensuring consistent observations and we have processes in place for handling kind of one all for extraordinary circumstances. And I think when we look ahead and say, okay, how will we share this information when it's public? And remember, nothing will go public until the fall of 2024, but we realize that our programs are more than a number and want to start thinking now and working closely with the field to figure out how we would share site quality profiles that would be similar to, but again, uniquely early childhood, different from the school quality profiles. From here, again, this is for, we asked you on behalf of the superintendent, received this for first review today. We'll then bring it back, we'll take it back to the Early Childhood Advisory Committee. We'll take into consideration some of the points that Dr. Duran made yesterday about, you know, are we fully acknowledging and, and making sure that we have the right charges in place for dealing with our dual language, special education classrooms, bringing it back to you all for final review in June. And then as you see, have an operational plan in partnership with our new ready regions across the state to make sure that we can execute on practice year two, that all programs have a fair chance to participate. And when we come back to you a year from now, that we'll be very well positioned with insight and data and full field participation to go into our first real year of VQP5. So with that, I'd like to see if there are questions before asking if you all want to receive for first review.
Questions? I know I have a question, but I will yield to others first.
I'd love to yield to you first.
Well, I mean, I'll share a comment, but then I do actually have a question based on something you were articulating about the appeal process. And I, I, I don't think the board understands how incredibly fortunate we are to have what we have as this work has come into the Department of Education. I will tell you that there are places around the country where there are real concerns when Ed comes in and takes on early childhood and does that through the lens of K-12 system. What I have been most impressed about throughout this transition process is the extraordinary level of engagement in the field, because understand, there are programs that are publicly funded that are actually working extraordinarily hard and have been long before it's come on the radar for others to be interested in this area. And they have been committed to serving a population absent the resources, absent the supports. And I think we have to continue to push at building this from the ground up such that the strengths that exist in these programs are understood, honored and built upon as opposed to looked at from a lens of this does not look like what happens in our K-12 system. And I think throughout the process, I, I feel that there's been a genuine effort just focusing on interactions in curriculum. I don't think we understand how important that is, given the debates that exist around the country about things like degrees. And of course, degrees are important, education certifications, these things are important, but we are operating in a, in a space where there's not been a valuing of what's happening in the early years. And if we're going to build that up, we've got to build that up from understanding what, what exists today. And I, I think the elegance of looking at interactions and curriculum is an incredible place to start. And the work that has gone into getting us to this point is, is just really been spectacular by Jenna, her team. I have been very impressed and I will say, I was one of those people very worried about, about this. My question is, as you were talking about appeals, I mean, I started to think about how in the Head Start context, for example, class is very much a part of the accountability structure that exists in Head Start already. And so I was imagining you could have a Head Start agency that is under review within the five-year cycle. Head Start programs have two reviews and one review is a very involved review related to the class. And so I do wonder how we're thinking about the impact of multiple efforts that can feel overwhelming for programs in a nine-month period around the assessment cycles and just trying to think about if there is an opportunity to consider where or how those scores, which are captured by external entities that come into these agencies and evaluate, just to what extent that might replace in a given year, the, the scores around class. So again, you're not having multiple experiences with external folk coming, because it is involved. It does disrupt the experience in a classroom. And so that's just something that I, I asked you to, to think about, even as you're doing your external validation efforts, where there could be partnership with Head Start to gain access to that information. I think it could be incredibly helpful and just reduce the pressure points that people experience on the ground.
Absolutely, yes. And so that's a, a, a very astute observation. We certainly will want to look at it, right? I think there's sort of two, two aspects of that are, that are important. I think the first is, you know, observation fatigue, right? And sort of really being cognizant of how often folks have outsiders coming into their classrooms and even as invisible as the, as the observers seek to be, it's still a presence, right? And, and you know, and the three-year-olds are curious characters, right? Who are always interested in who that is in the back. You know, I know, you know, and we've got great Head Start representation on our advisory committee who we can engage on this. I know sometimes folks want those to count and sometimes they don't. And so what we can do is kind of engage through our incredible, we have a director of Head Start Collaboration who does weekly meetings with a lot of our Head Start grantees, engage folks on that very question and get their, their perspective on it. At times in the past, the observations haven't happened or sometimes the feds use a slightly different metric. And so some folks might prefer apples to apples, but I think Dr. Mann, looking at both what the impact is, surveying folks on the impact, making sure that we're not creating observation fatigue so that it doesn't feel useful to educators, as well as specifically looking at if you have already outside observers coming in there, how do we make sure that that's not redundant or duplicative? I will say, we had some programs that used to be observed under Virginia Quality and we have sunset that. And so there's been a process, we've been working with the field so that you're not being measured with multiple expectations of quality. And we sort of also similarly make sure to align our Virginia Preschool Initiative and Mixed Delivery guidelines. So we're not saying, this is one of the hard things about, in addition to all the things that Dr. Mann said, we've also in early childhood, define quality in like six different ways. And so if you receive multiple funding sources, you're like, you know, it's a lot of hoops to jump through. But we will, we can look at that and come back with some recommendations as we go into the, the, the first real year.
Ms. Holden?
Well, thank you for this and your presentation yesterday and the, really the extraordinary work going on. And I was just so impressed with some of the numbers you shared yesterday about the extent of participation this year. And so I have a couple of questions. One is, am I correct in understanding that starting year three or the year following practice year two, the first year of full implementation, participation in the quality measurement and improvement system will be mandatory for all publicly funded, all programs receiving public dollars in Virginia? Okay. So we're working towards 100% in not the, in the not-too-distant future. That's just very, very exciting. And that will include in the, the curriculum requirements and the observation requirements. And do we yet know whether that will also include the financial reward piece that is making such a difference now, enhancing the, the capacity to attract and retain good people to do this work?
Absolutely. So one quick, quick sort of point of clarification. So by this time next year, we'll be sending out letters to everybody who receives publicly funds, right? Like you need to participate. To be clear, right? The requirement there, the bare minimum, well, that you need to let folks into your classrooms to observe, right? And we will give you that feedback and, you know, and really sort of our hope is that you can use it in a way to support your educators. We cannot require you to use curriculum. So just, and I know this is, is just a kind of a, it's, it's an important distinction. You will receive full points, right? You will receive additional points if you choose to use one of our approved curriculum. But if you say, I choose to use something that's not on the state's list for whatever reason, that's also okay. Like there's no consequence other than you don't receive those points for it as part of your overall measurement. So I want to kind of make sure that that's clear because again, you know, you know, mandating somebody to use curriculum is not likely to result in them really embracing it and supporting their educators to use it day in, day out. So there will always be choice around curriculum, whether you want to use whatever approved option and receive the points for that, or whether or not you want to, you know, abstain it entirely. What will not be optional is having folks come into your classroom so we can understand that the interaction piece. And, and again, we hope to get everybody on board and to explain how that works. In terms of the financial piece, I think there's sort of two aspects to note. I think the first is we are continuing to grow Recognize B5, which is the direct-to-educator incentive we talked a little bit about yesterday. Last year, 6,000 educators, $2,000 per educator. We're still finalizing details for this year, but we received an additional, at least in both versions of the budget or all three versions of the budget going around right now, there are additional state dollars as well as federal dollars available. And so we're hoping for it to be more than 10,000 educators this year, you know, and hopefully a higher dollar amount as much. But we've sort of committed at least $2,000 to each educator and that will, we're prepared to do that for each of the next two years and really continuing to make sure that educators understand that that's available to them. This is not for all educators in VQP5. This is just childcare and family childcare, because what we found when we did the, the randomized control trial is that it had really no effect on school-based teachers, right? Because their, their compensation is so much significantly higher. But I think to some of the points that Dr. Mann noted, we still also are trying to address this structurally. And so, you know, when I present the access plus quality, and then we've talked 100% about quality this time, you know, we are working in response to what's embodied in this state budget around how we might think differently about how we fund the childcare subsidy program to account for the actual costs. And so there's some really important language in this year's state budget as it relates to the Virginia Preschool Initiative, Mixed Delivery, which is high-quality pre-K and private settings, and the childcare subsidy program that says we need to kind of account for the costs of operating. And the costs of operating are anywhere from 60 to 80%, 85% of it is personnel, right? And so really thinking through, how do we achieve kind of fairness across the board? Well, we got to figure out how to address compensation. And so that's something that in addition to that direct-to-educator incentive that we will be working on so that, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a voucher program, right? So not all of your kids receive those dollars, but at least getting more dollars into the base rate so that we can tee up programs to be able to compensate educators more fairly, which in turn should have a virtuous cycle of less turnover and more chance of being able to develop staff to be successful. So it's both the strengths-based approach that Dr. Mann noticed, but also really thinking we have to tackle this turnover issue. If not, you know, it, it is, it's not a level playing field across our, our publicly funded and publicly funded private providers.
And so I, I hear you that the, getting the finances right is not a one-time or even a two-time thing. You're looking at it with the, the longer horizon. That's terrific. And my last question and also a comment is that the, the measurement systems, that's all going to be public eventually. Fall of '23 will still be private, but you'll start at some point, presumably the following year, start publishing this data and you analogize and, and not just the ratings number, but a profile. I think that's brilliant. And I think analogizing to our school quality profile is good. The one thing, comment I would add is you almost need a communications campaign to go with it. And I think one of the learning lessons of our school quality profile is we actually do really good work on the school quality profile and we, and professionals look at it all the time. Do parents ever look at it? I don't think so. I think parents, if anything, they go to the, there's some commercial providers, you know, GreatSchools.org, Niche, those kinds of things. And those things may pull from our school quality profile data. I don't even know how much, but in terms of the messaging and how it, what's emphasized, et cetera, we've, in the K-12 world, we, what most parents see, we're not really directly controlling that messaging as much as we might like. I may be wrong, maybe, maybe the general public goes to school quality profiles more than I think, but so, and, and that's partly, you know, we, we didn't develop it with a real communication to parents strategy built in from the beginning, I don't think. Or it may, it may take funding for communications plans, et cetera. I mean, it's not just a matter of getting the websites right, it's figuring out how to push them out there. So, and I don't, I don't mean to disparage what we're doing at all on the K-12 world because I think it's incredibly valuable, but, and, and maybe just those commercial things rose up in response to the market need nationally and, and, you know, maybe there's nothing that could be different in the K-12 space. And I don't know whether there are commercial equivalents in the pre-K space, but be ready for them and be ready to beat them if we've got the best information parents should have.
No, thank you, Ms. Holden. I think, I mean, partly we realize that this needs a lot of work and I think both starting with what exists, what we like about what exists, where there are challenges about what exists, whether you're looking at the school quality profile or the Great Schools niche, some of the other options, you know, we, part of the ready regions, we fund to do four things, to build relationships, right? To support this work around measuring and improving quality, to support our efforts around access and choice and enrollment, right? Working to think about how they make enrollment work easier for families and around family engagement. And I think really important, right, that we start with, I was taking your comment and combining it with Dr. Mann's about from the ground up, right? What do programs want to be out there, right? What, what does that look like? How do we share some of what exists and some prototypes and engage them? And also what's useful for families? And I know we've worked very closely with UVA around family and educator surveys and, you know, many families pick the first place they go, right? And there are sort of advantages and disadvantages to that, right? I think if we can sort of assure that everybody meets a certain level of quality, that's fine, right? For some programs. On the other hand, I know when we talk to families and we've done some work, particularly even around the childcare subsidy program, you know, they would love to know a little bit more, right? And there are certain things that they, they care most about. And so really thinking that these won't launch until the fall of 2024, we see this as a two-year process to kind of explore, to engage, I think, to look at what is out there and then to, I think, as Dr. Mann acknowledged, that this is a different space, right? And so really thinking through, how do we build something that works for our providers and our families so that, you know, a provider can point families to it, right? And families find it useful as they're navigating these systems.
Well, as I said yesterday, thank you for this work and I'm really excited about your leadership. I want to say it again since I had the opportunity. But I really, one comment and then just a curiosity question. I really appreciate again, the work on curriculum and I, your comment on it's not just having the curriculum, it's now the implementation of such. And as you said, I really appreciate that you'll continue to look at the nuance, I believe that's an important one though, to understand how that implication of the curriculum will have on our English learners and our students with disabilities. And really, there's a lot of good research out there that the very first interaction students have in an educational environment, and I consider early childhood the first interaction for many of these students, right? Can have a long-lasting impact on their success over time. And so if we're not making sure that our students who are acquiring English and don't speak another, speak another language, have a positive speak, and speak another language have a positive experience, we're saying them on a trajectory of many, many years of unsuccessful time in education. So I really appreciate that you're going to spend a little bit more focus on that. I think, how do we help our providers, whether it's public school or, or not, to recognize those students early on, what their needs are, and the strengths, as you said yesterday? Well, that's the most, I love when you talked about that yesterday, the strengths that people bring to the table, our students are bringing to the table. So thank you. I'm going to double down on that every chance I get, but it, it has to be cleared, I think, to everyone that this is an important part of the work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
And so thank you for that. My curiosity question is, I saw when you showed up the slide on Ready regions, it looked like Region 4 was broken up into two. Is that accurate with, because we have eight superintendent regions, which generally we organize, but it looked like you had nine. And if I'm not mistaken, it looked like Alexandria Arlington, Falls Church, and Fairfax were separate out of Region 4. I'm assuming because of the size of them, or just a curiosity?
Yes, absolutely. So we do have nine. We went back and forth. We looked at the VDSS, the health, the education, the kind of smart beginnings footprint, and came up with the nine, right, largely based on kind of combination of, of size. But yes, it was mostly the enormous number of classrooms and NOVA that allowed us to kind of split that into two. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Want to make a, a, part of the reason we are really focused on making sure that Link B5 works for the field is that it ultimately will give us important data on this question of curriculum, right? And again, there's good national research on this, but all of it tends to be in sort of smaller settings, like nobody's really figuring out at scale, like how do you get folks to use it effectively day in, day out? And where is it kind of connected to kids' growth and outcomes? So in Link B5, we capture data down to the classroom level, you know? And we're building the capacity then to affiliate kids with those classrooms and then connect that to kids' progress, growth, and longitudinal outcomes. And so it ultimately will allow us to look at, all right, which classrooms are using these curriculum? What do we know about those kids? What do we know about those classrooms in terms of the class score, the curriculum used, right, the credential of the teacher, a variety of other kind of key factors? And then where are we seeing kind of the most growth and where might we not see it? And then with, in this contract, right, we have with our open educational resource, we can then sort of say, if, for example, we're not seeing as much growth, right, in dual-language classrooms that are using kind of approved curriculum, we can hone in there and figure out, like, in the implementation, what's not working, right? But before, it was so hard because so much of what we know about early childhood quality is affiliated with, like, the funding source, right? Or is affiliated with kind of, you know, only a subset of sites. It's not fully inclusive of all of our kids and all of our, our programs. So we're really excited about what we think the data that Link B5 will be able to provide. And I think mostly because it will capture sometimes information that we didn't have about some of these classrooms. And then I think with, for those programs that choose to use StreamN3, you know, not only sort of saying, okay, how do we use the data from the ground on Virginia to say, if this isn't working in terms of how we're implementing curriculum, what do we need to change? And that, I think, is really, really important in terms of cracking the nut of, it's not just having the materials, but it's the day-in, day-out use. And, and really, I think we've sort of struggled nationally to figure out how we do that at scale in a way that works for individual programs, particularly those classrooms that serve our kids with greatest needs.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you so very much for coming, and we will accept this on first review and look forward to seeing you back in June.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Yep. So that takes us to Item L. And Item L focuses on amendments to the licensure regulations for school personnel. And we have Dr. Joan.
Good morning, Vice President Mann, Board members, and State Superintendent Balo. I hope I have also a pretty easy item for us today. As mentioned, we're going to be looking at, for first review amendments to the licensure regulations for school personnel to include statutory requirements for initial and renewal of a license. During the '21 session, the General Assembly passed House Bill 1904 and Senate Bill 1196 requiring each person seeking initial license or renewal of a license to complete instruction or training in cultural competencies as prescribed by the Board. To meet this statutory requirement, amendments to the Virginia Board of Education's licensure regulations for school personnel are necessary. The proposed amendment today will align the regulations with current law. The Board approved the notice of intended regulatory action, or NOR, for this regulatory change at the June 17, '21 meeting. The NOR was submitted for executive branch review, and the public comment period closed for February, or on February 16, '22. This legislation also required each school board to adopt and implement policies that require each teacher and any school board employee holding a license issued by the Board to complete cultural competency training in accordance with the guidance issued by the Board at least every two years. Pursuant to the requirements of this legislation, the Board approved the guidance on cultural competency training for teachers and other licensed school board employees in Virginia Public Schools at the November 21 meeting. Following a 30-day public comment period, the guidance became effective January 6, 2022. You will note in the Attachment A, the amendments to the code regarding licensure eligibility as well as renewal. You'll see those highlighted for you. And at this time, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends that the Board accept for first review the amendments to the licensure regulations for school personnel to comport with legislation from '21 General Assembly. I'll be glad if you have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Questions from Board members? Dr. Duran?
No question. Just a comment that I'm very glad that this is moving forward. This is such an important part of what I believe all educators need, is to really understand all students and to be able to work with all students, work with all families, to understand, again, as we talked about with Jenna, Jenna and Conway, the last, the strengths that our diversity bring in the classroom, and how do we support all of our students' success? So I've learned so much through cultural competency training that I've had, working in populations that I've never worked with before, and individuals I haven't worked with before. It's enhanced my ability as an educator to serve and listen to various viewpoints, to various backgrounds. And I just think that this is something that is a huge accomplishment that we've made as a Board, and I thank our General Assembly for having this legislation because it will make a difference in families and parents, teachers being able to feel heard and seen regardless of who they are.
Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent Balo?
Thank you. I just want to be really clear that the superintendent's recommendation is for the changes to the regulations that have already passed. And, you know, I, I think that this, this item will continue to be an item of discussion as we continue to align priorities and, and events, initiatives, trainings, et cetera, with Executive Order 1 going forward. And just, just want you to know that there is, there is definitely a sensitivity and a commitment to making sure that our teachers are culturally competent. Defining that is going to be ongoing and an ongoing discussion with this Board and with others. And I so appreciate Dr. Johnson's participation in those conversations, as well as your team, Dr. Johnson, and certainly I hear from the field on a regular basis, both in, in comments that were reflected in yours, Dr. Duran, as, as well as other viewpoints. And so I just want, want this Board to know that this is an ongoing conversation internally, externally, and I think it would behoove the Board to continue talking about it as well as we move forward.
Thank you so much. It's interesting, I, as you were speaking, suddenly the thought of, or not the thought, I should say, the, the voice of the students hearkened to my mind. I, I had the opportunity last month to participate in the conference that brings together student councils from across the Commonwealth. And it was very interesting to hear students in their own voice in high schools speak about the importance of what this regulation represented in terms of their desire to want to ensure that educators really are being supported in addressing exactly what Dr. Duran said and what was the spirit and intent of, of the law that was passed. And it, it was stunning because, of course, we hear a lot about the importance of, understandably so, parent voice and the importance of parent voice, and we must, we must honor that for certain. But it was, it was very, very interesting for me to be before students who were really wanting to make certain that the Board of Education understands their concern about such matters as it relates to their own education experience and how much they want for their educators to feel comfortable being able to support them as, you know, this, this guidance is intended to, to support. So I just, I promised them that I would bring that forward and give the, the public an opportunity to hear what students are saying. And since it's germane to this particular issue, I thought I'd bring it up here as opposed to at the end of session where there are other comments that are not germane that I just want to make sure I honor and, and having attended that event, so. Ms. Holton?
Thank you. I, I just have a question. So this is on first review today, and we're not being asked to waive first review. But, but am I correct in, and I guess this is first to you, Dr. Johnson, and then a, that this is basically purely ministerial?
Correct.
Carrying out the, the legislation that's been passed that we really have no discretion over?
Correct.
So, so Superintendent Balo, I'd just like to understand before we, this comes back before us for final review in June, I hear you that there's going to be ongoing conversations on this topic more globally, but do you have specific concerns about the, the regulatory language that's been proposed that we'll be reviewing in June to implement this, what the legislature's already done on this topic? Because if so, I think it would behoove us to hear those now so that we can fix them, if possible, before we come back in June.
Madam Vice President and Ms. Holton, thank you. And I should have been clearer or restated again that this is ministerial. This is comporting. These, these proposed amendments are comporting with legislation that was passed in 2021. They, it, it must be done. My, my bigger point was exactly what you said, and Dr. Duran, and Dr. Mann, in terms of, this is a really important issue, and it behooves us to continue talking about it as a Board, as an agency, as a field, and as constituents. And, and I certainly hope that that conversation does continue.
Then, if I may, just further, recognizing that this is just one step in an ongoing administrative process, even with respect to these ministerial changes, maybe, maybe we should waive first review and just get this one over with. I, I don't have any strong feeling about that, but I just put it on the table.
Madam Vice, Vice President, that would not be my recommendation, simply because we don't need to do that at this point. We can do a first review and, and continue having discussions and, and move forward with a regular process.
Well, I, I don't have any need to push it, but just on the understanding that you're not anticipating coming up with regulatory language changes between now and June. Languages to this ministerial act.
Yeah, that, that hasn't been discussed internally.
So you're, okay. Well, I'll go back to what I said before. It would behoove us to know well before June, I mean, that's the purpose of first review, is to hear if there are any issues. And not hearing any issues today, we'll see if the public or others have any concerns for us.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We'll receive this on first review. That takes us to Item M, is it? First review of revisions to the list of 2022-23 Board of Education-approved industry credentials, occupational competency assessments, and professional licenses. And we have Dr. David Eschman, Director of Career and Technical and Adult Education, and Jane Brown, CTE industry credential specialist. So.
Good morning. Good morning. Dr. Mann, that seat looks good on you. Good morning, Vice President Mann, members of the Board, Superintendent Balo. It is a pleasure to be here, and I am joined by Jane Brown, our CTE credentialing specialist. As required by the Board, as required by Board regulation, the Office of Career, Technical, and Adult Education annually presents additions and deletions to the list of Board of Education-approved industry certifications, occupational competency assessments, and professional licenses. I would like to add and take this opportunity to note that the additions and deletions presented here today have also been presented to the Virginia CTE Advisory Committee, which is an extension of this Board. The profile of a Virginia graduate illustrates the knowledge, skills, and experiences that students must obtain to be successful in college and/or the workforce, life-ready skills. The profile of a graduate provides the framework for the requirements students must meet to earn a standard advanced or applied studies diploma. The 2020 General Assembly approved and the Governor signed House Bill 516 and Senate Bill 112 pertaining to high school graduation requirements. The Legislation 8 VAC 20-131-51 details the requirements for graduation, effective for students that enter Grade 9 in 1819, which currently is this year's seniors. Under additional requirements for graduation, it details, "In accordance with the standards of quality, students shall, one, complete an advanced placement, honors, international baccalaureate, or dual-enrollment course; two, complete a high-quality work-based learning experience established by Board guidance on work-based learning; or, three, earn a career and technical education credential approved by the Board." 8 VAC 20-131-51B2 details the criteria for awarding verified credit. A laboratory science verified credit may be awarded to students who complete a career and technical education program sequence, and either, one, pass two examinations or occupational competency assessments in a career and technical education field that confers certification or an occupational competency credential from a recognized industry trade or professional association; or, two, acquire two professional licenses in a career and technical education field from the Commonwealth of Virginia; or, three, pass one exam or competency assessment and acquire one license. The examination or occupational competency assessment must be approved by the Board as an additional test to verify student achievement. Because of the emphasis and integration and integral relationship of the career and technical education credentials to the requirements to earn a diploma, the Virginia Department of Education evaluates on an ongoing basis the industry credentials against prescribed criteria for these graduation requirements. At this time, I would like to bring Jane Brown forward to share and walk us through the credential criteria and the recommended credential additions and deletions that we bring to you today.
Good morning again. Thank you, Dr. Eschman. The process of reviewing and validating industry credentials is primarily based on the following criteria. One, the test must be standardized and graded independently of the school or school division in which the test is given. Two, the test must be knowledge-based. Three, the test must be administered on a statewide, multi-state, or international basis, or administered as part of another state's accountability assessment program. And four, to be counted in a specific academic area, the test must measure content that incorporates or exceeds the SOL content in the course for which verified credit is given. Credentials are reviewed and updated on an annual basis. Submissions for new credentials and updates for existing credentials are accepted Submissions for new credentials and updates for existing credentials are accepted throughout the year through December 15. The new credential submissions and updates to existing credentials are organized by program area and thoroughly analyzed by a team of seven program area specialists, the curriculum and instruction coordinator, and the industry credentialing specialist, who verify that each credential aligns with specific CTE courses, is recognized in the workplace, and is of value to secondary students. Currently, there are 449 Board-approved industry and trade association certification examinations, professional licenses, and occupational competency assessments listed in our student credential catalog. This year, 246 new credentials were submitted for our review. After much research from state staff and necessary communication between credentialing vendors, school divisions, and business and industry, 38 new credentials have been recommended for addition to our student credentials catalog. These credentials meet the Board's graduation requirements, verified credit requirements, and diploma seal requirements for exemplary performance in CTE and STEM. There are 17 recommended new credentials within the program area of business and information technology, six in health and medical sciences, one in marketing, one in military science, six in technology education, and seven in trade and industrial education. Industry or trade association certification examinations, professional licenses, and occupational competency assessments are continually being revised and discontinued to stay current with technology and changes in the workplace. This year, industry credentialing providers have discontinued 41 previously-approved certification examinations that we too are recommending for deletion. Unlike most years, 28 of the 41 recommended credential deletions are from a single source, SkillsUSA, a career and technical student organization who has shifted their vision and are no longer offering credentialing opportunities to students. Of the 41 credential deletions, there is one in the program area of agriculture education, three in business and technology, two in family and consumer sciences, one in health and medical sciences, 10 in technology education, and 24 in trade and industrial education. David?
Thank you, Jane. I would like to highlight the timetable for further review and action by the Office of Career, Technical, and Adult Education. After Board approval, the list will be posted on Town Hall pursuant to requirements of the Administrative Process Act. Additionally, the new credentialing list will be updated in Verso and Canvas, our state's online repository of CTE courses and credentials, including tests and accommodations, must be published. Once published in July, it gives school divisions the opportunity to review the new credentials and courses for the following school year and make adjustments in their learning management system. Further, a superintendent's memorandum will notify school divisions of the technical changes and additions to and deletions from the list of industry certifications, occupational competency assessments, and licenses, and will be posted on the BDOE website. The Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends the Board of Education waive first review and approve the 38 new industry certification examinations, occupational competency assessments, and professional licenses to meet the Board of Education's requirements for graduation in the career and technical education in STEM SEALS. Further, it is recommended that the Board approve the removal of 41 credentials that are no longer offered or provided, offered by our providers. At this time, I will take any questions.
Thank you. I did have a question for Ms. Brown. You mentioned that one big provider is no longer offering credentials to students. I had just really wondered if you could say a little bit more about that, more just from the perspective of appreciating what might be behind the shift. Is it due to students needing to have more time to become capable of operating in those spaces, or is it demand? Or, I mean, it was, yes, please. It was just interesting to hear that shift and what's driving the dropping of some of these.
Well, it came directly from the vendor, which is the SkillsUSA. It's a student organization, and it seems that they have shifted their focus from credentialing to focusing in students, supporting students in different ways. But it came directly from them. We also have looked at each of the credentials that will be deleted and are no longer offered through SkillsUSA, and we do have other industry-recognized credentials that benefit our students and would be very beneficial for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jane. So to look at where the deletions are identified, particularly with SkillsUSA, there are other multiple options for all of the courses where that, where those credentials were offered.
I was just curious.
Yep.
No, thank you. Other questions about this item? That was yours. All right, so we are being asked to waive first review and approve the 38 new industry certifications and remove the 41 credentials that are no longer being offered. And the request is due to timing, to ensure that there's enough time for these things to be communicated to school divisions, and so are there concerns about that? All right, hearing none, then can I have a motion to approve a stated? Dr. Anderson, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item M, N, I'm sorry, the first review of recommendations to approve new education programs at institutions of higher ed. Dr. Johnson?
Good morning again, Vice President, Board members, and State Superintendent Balo. The regulations governing the review and approval of education programs in Virginia requires that the Virginia Board of Education approve requests from Virginia institutions of higher ed to add new endorsements. We allow that one at one point each year. For each endorsement request, the EPP, or the Educator Preparation Program, are required to submit evidence of local need, partnerships, as well as matrix aligning with the regulation competencies, syllabi for all courses in the program, and other supporting documentation such as clinical handbooks, et cetera. I am providing a little bit more information regarding the review process for the public as well as others. Upon first receipt of that, I would describe that as a first-level review by our internal agency staff or team to confirm that the components, the narration outlining the rationale, documentation of school divisions, demand data, institution and division support, as well are documented. A second level of review is shared by our staff in the agency from the learning and innovation staff to review the specific content and the breadth of that content in addressing the regulations for the particular endorsements. They use various documents to align and confirm that, using the course description, a syllabi, as well as any other documents of assignments or handbooks to provide an overview of clinical experiences. In addition to this initial review process, there are two forms of accountability that the Board is also aware of, in that the first year after the implementation, there will be an annual profile review to demonstrate the outcomes of that program. And then in two years, as you are familiar, there is an annual, excuse me, a biannual accountability review of those same programs. As well as, in conjunction with the national accreditation, those same programs are also reviewed for national accreditation standards, as well as the individual programs are reviewed by our specialists in content, specialists to confirm alignment with our BDOE regulations. And to that, on March 21, '22, ABTEL recommended that the Board grant approval for the new endorsement programs you have in front of you. The following is the list of those institutions of higher ed and the respective programs. You will note that Averit University is seeking new endorsements at the graduate level for English as a second language, as well as a math specialist for elementary and middle school. Liberty University is seeking a new endorsement at the graduate level for science and earth science, as well as physics. And Randolph College is seeking a new program in theater arts pre-K through 12 at the graduate level. And the University of Richmond is seeking at the graduate level in elementary, English, history, and mathematics. And finally, Virginia Tech is seeking a new undergrad program in elementary pre-K through six. And the Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends that the Board of Education waive first review and approve ABTEL's recommendation to approve the new education endorsement programs. And available for any questions that the Board has.
Are there any questions about this item? All right, so we're being asked to waive first review and approve ABTEL's recommendations to improve the new education endorsement programs. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Duran? A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Davis Fock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. For item O, we have Dr. Albon. We're going to be reviewing recommendations for School Division of Innovation designation. Welcome, Dr. Albon.
Good morning. It is still morning. Vice President Mann, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Balo. Good morning. I am Dr. Brendan Albon, Director of the Office of STEM and Innovation here at the Department of Education. I'm excited to bring to you the 2022 School Divisions of Innovation designation nomination. Who said that right? The 2017 Virginia General Assembly approved House Bill 1981, which directed the Virginia Board of Education to develop regulations for the designation of School Divisions of Innovation, SDI. To be eligible for this designation, a local school board would submit a locally Board-approved plan of innovation to the Virginia Board of Education using criteria as presented within the regulations. Those applicants are reviewed against a rubric that consists of criteria outlined by the goals of the legislation. Upon being designated as an SDI, not only can that division have a sense of pride for the five years of the designation, they are also tasked to act as a laboratory of innovation and to share their unique programs and solutions in order that, across the Commonwealth, school divisions can learn within a vast professional learning community. An SDI designation also provides for the ability to request flexibilities from certain regulatory provisions and is permitted to adopt alternative policies for school administrators, teachers, and staff to meet the diverse needs of students. I am pleased to share that this year's nominee has not requested any flexibilities from regulations. Radford City Schools did an extensive environmental scan of students, parents, and local industry, and concluded a strong need and desire for equipping students to be better prepared to enter the workplace with enhanced computational thinking skills and computer science credentials. Their innovations include integrating the Virginia Computer Science and Digital Learning Integration Standards directly into their core taught curriculum as far down as kindergarten, expanding their Project Lead the Way course offerings to include more computer science, engineering, and biomedical offerings throughout middle and high school, partnering with Radford University, Virginia Tech, and New River Community College to enhance teacher pedagogies to enrich STEM plus C student learning, the development of digital portfolios which will follow the skills progression acquired by students from kindergarten through high school, participation in a community showcase of learned skills for all students from kindergarten through 11th grade, and the completion of a senior capstone project by all graduating seniors. Radford has a robust internal evaluation mechanism and will be required to submit an annual report to the Department of Education highlighting successes and challenges experienced within their innovations. Therefore, the Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends that the Board of Education waive first review and approve the designation of Schools, School Division of Innovation on Radford City Schools for the years 2022 through 2027. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Albon. Any questions, comments about this item? Yes, Ms. Holton?
If and when this is approved, how many school districts of innovation do we now have, approximately?
Currently, I believe we have about 13 school divisions across the Commonwealth who are already, and they're working through their five-year designation. At the end of their five-year, they may reapply. So this year, we will have one pending Board approval. We will have one new addition to that group.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, hearing no other questions, can we get a motion to waive first review and approve this recommendation for this school to receive the designation of School of Innovation, School Division, rather, sorry? Do you have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Anderson, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Davis Fock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to the end of our items in terms of the agenda. It's now an opportunity for Board members to share, along with our superintendent, if there are any comments for open discussion at this time.
I have a question for Superintendent Balo. So I know that at our last Board meeting, we got a good update on all the pending legislation, and I know since then, the Virginia Literacy Act was signed. Is there any other substantive education bills that would have implications to the Board and the Commonwealth that have thus been signed or that are any other changes to what was presented last Board meeting?
Madam, excuse me, Madam Vice President, Dr. Duran, yes. Governor signed 700 bills, amended, I believe, 100 or so, and vetoed around 25. That's all bills. That's not just education bills. Thank goodness, or we would have to meet every day. I would like to possibly defer a full update from the, from our legislative liaison or our policy person, Dr. Sale, until the next meeting, and here's why, because there's no budget passed yet. So while those bills have been signed, such as the Literacy Act, we are certainly circling our wagons and getting ready to move forward on the Literacy Act and doing some substantive work internally and with stakeholders, but without funding to say that, you know, to move forward with things like staffing and moving forward with some of the pieces that we need to put in place. We haven't been able to do that. In terms of other legislation that has passed, there's a great deal that is related to school construction, teacher raises, and once we have a budget, we will, and I can tell you, Dr. Sale is already working multiple scenarios for how this might, might look once a budget is passed. I know that she'll be able to give you a much more accurate and thorough update. And this is a very curious position that I find myself in, to have legislation passed that we are eager to move on, that we are eager to share as a Board, as an agency, as a field, and really having our hands tied just a little bit because we don't have a budget passed. And this is all new to me. So thank you for your patience in allowing me to defer a little bit, but, Dr. Duran, as soon as we have an update, I would invite you to give me a call, and I can certainly offline give you a little better, a little better update on what is coming in front of the Board.
of the Board, and certainly we will have that officially for you, once we do have a budget.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I've been following closely, too, I just wanted for our public to hear what we could at this time, but I think is appropriate, given the pending budget, to defer. And then I also just have one other comment I want to share, that I did participate, Superintendent Balo also brought greetings to this. I serve on the pre-K three literacy screening revision for PALS, and we had our very first meeting on March 30th, I want to check the date correctly, if that's correct. On March 30th, it was a great opportunity, we have stakeholders from around the Commonwealth, from teachers to parents to professors, there's also a superintendent, myself, and one other, and we're really excited about the progress being made there for, for the public. PALS is, just a reminder, it is our assessment that we use for our early grades to understand literacy, and it is something that UVA has been a partner in this work, and I'm really pleased at the progress being made, and so, I don't have any substantive to share at this moment in terms of the work, it was more of an introductory meeting, but I can share something more at the next Board meeting, if we have another meeting between then, but, very exciting opportunity for us to make sure that we're really using PALS in the way that's intended to, which is to identify students and make sure we're getting the proper resources and supports for them, and it's a direct connection to the Literacy Act, so it was a pleasure to be on the first, to be on the first meeting, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Ms. Holden?
Thank you. I have two items. One, I just wanted to share with the Board that I have now attended two meetings of ABTEL, the Advisory Board on Teacher Education and Licensor. We had not filled our Board liaison spot there, I think, since Ms. Loder was serving in that capacity, and I just wanted to report that it's a very hard-working, diligent group, representatives from across the Commonwealth and across the education stakeholder spectrum doing good work, and, and I just commend their recommendations to us when we, when they come up, having seen the, the good, hard work going on behind the scenes to support us. And I just, a particular topic that came up is, both of these meetings, they got presentations on the Virginia Literacy Act, and they are ready and eager to do their part on it. There was a fair amount of discussion around, you know, this includes a lot of local division representatives in one capacity or another, about are there unfunded mandates, and that is obviously always an issue from our localities, and so I think, and particularly around the reading specialist ratios, there was some concern that those ratios weren't high enough, and, you know, there was, I think we were helping them understand how that's actually an improvement over where we are now, where we have no ratio, so, but, but I, I would just say that it made me realize a little bit that the Literacy Act, it's going to need a communication strategy, as well as the other implementation pieces. The second thing I wanted to speak briefly to is, we lost somebody very special to the DOE community since we last met, George Wilcox. George worked here, leading our, our CTE efforts for many, many, many years. Emily tells me he was at the department overall for over 40 years, which is just hard to believe, but what that means is his work at CTE here spanned such a range of time and changes, and, and going from being a sort of forgotten corner to being much more central in our work on connecting young people to career opportunities, and, and did that work with such grace, and, and quiet humility, and knowledge and commitment, snuck out of here and retired, apparently, back in February, which I had not realized, and then sadly passed away earlier this month. So, this is just a word of tribute to George, and I thank you for his service and sympathy to his family.
Thank you for sharing that, I did not realize that.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Davis Vought?
If it's all right, I'd like to make a couple of comments that are, that are timely at this time of the year. I'd like to reach out and do a special acknowledgement, number one, to all of the, the principals, building principals, assistant principals, and the teachers in the classrooms for the soon-to-be arriving SOL test for the spring assessment, and so, they are working countless hours to provide individualized remediation and instruction to help these children to be as successful as they possibly can. So as they head into this very stressful time of the year, I just would like to make sure that everybody just takes a moment to recognize the, the emotional state that some of our teachers are in, and, and their superheroic emotions and activities that they're doing to provide for our students. And I would like to do a shout-out to all of the student athletes or scholars of the future who are going to be accepting scholarships to their chosen universities and colleges, and congratulations to them for all their hard work and accomplishments, and this is another time of the year where that's a timely point to make, is in recognition of their efforts, and I'm, I'm very excited for the, the things that are coming for our early childhood initiatives, and very proud of Dr. or Ms. Conway for everything she's doing as a school who participated in the class evaluations, and it has been a blessing to our pre-K teachers and the, the level of relationships and communication that they are providing to our children is truly astonishing. It's, it's a deeper dive into relationships and therefore preparing them for, for kindergarten, so I'm very proud and excited where we're going there, and I, I hope to see you in June face-to-face, Ms. Balo, I hope to meet you as well, and, and to each and every one of you, it's, it's a very important time of the year for our students and teachers, so thank you.
Thank you. Very, very glad you've been able to participate through this channel, we miss your, certainly your physical presence here. I will just say, by way of closing, if there aren't other comments, I did want to report out on the Virginia Student Council Association, because I tell you, it is always a gift to be able to hear directly from young people, and I certainly promised them that I would channel their thoughts back to the Board publicly, so that they really do feel like people are listening to what they have to say as they are struggling through, through school, and so, there really were just about six points, I'll just share really quickly, that they wanted to make sure we had an appreciation for, and some of these items we have, you know, had an opportunity to act on and hear about today. The first really focused on the concern over students being educated in facilities that are subpar, and the impact that that has on learning, and the overall morale of teachers. Just really perplexed about why there are some schools in their communities that seem to get resources to improve facilities in other schools that do not. So, the concern over the psychological and emotional impact of, of not feeling as valued as other students when it comes to facilities. Mental health concerns, students speaking very openly about having struggled through students, their friends committing suicide as a result of the stress that students are feeling in schools regarding being bullied, and all related to issues of, you know, different choices that people make, and the fear of just not feeling safe and valued in school due to issues related to gender identity and other concerns. I mean, students speaking very, very bluntly about the pain of these experiences that they are having, the economic burden of paying for fees to access college, and the want for more programs that actually waive the ability to pay for college interest exams, SAT, ACT, and the, the economic burden that families are facing right now, lack of attention to helping students learn how to cope with anxiety. I hear a lot of students speak about the anxiety they feel as they are preparing to be emancipated and enter the world of life beyond high school, and just a real sense that there's not enough attention to helping students develop the skills they need to be able to cope and effectively deal with some of the decisions that they'll have to make on the other side of leaving high school. Concerns over accessing factual information regarding reproductive health, understanding the legal definitions of terms such as consent, dealing with surviving sexual assault, these are things that are on the minds of young people in our high schools. And certainly, this, the idea around effective teaching, it was interesting to hear one student speak about, I, I referenced that the want to make sure that teachers feel equipped and safe and able to address issues that have to do with being culturally competent in the classroom. These were their words, not my words, their words. The wish to want to focus on expanding learning beyond what's mandated, the opportunity to really focus on critical thinking and curiosity, and, and just the kinds of skills that they believe are going to be important on the other side of high school. These are the things that are on the minds of young people that are representing student government across the Commonwealth, and, in like manner, as we talk to people who come to us in the public segment of our meetings, I was very, you know, sure to express the importance of students understanding how the decision-making process in education works, making sure that they're aware of the authority of this Board, the authority of local Boards, and really trying to help ensure that, as they are trying to get their concerns heard, their issues heard, that they really are doing that in channels that really can lead to change in what is happening in their environment, so. Integrating students with special needs, I'm sorry, that was the other issue, the want to really help more students and faculty understand the power of kindness, the power of what it means to fully in, include students with special needs into the lifeblood of the, of the high school experience, and a real want for that to change, so. Those were the things on the minds of, of our young people, and just wanted to make sure to share.
Thank you for sharing, very powerful and great way to end the meeting with our students in mind, thank you, Dr. Mann.
Absolutely. Well, if there be no other business, I would like to say the meeting of the Board is adjourned. Yes, I can hit the gavel.